Good evening. At this time, I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Wallingford Inland and Wetlands and Water Course Commission order. The date is Wednesday, September 6th, 2017, and the time is 7:00 PM. Please join me in the Pledge Allegiance of the Flag. I'm going on to roll call. Ally?
Here.
Nick Kernig. Jim Vitale.
David Karen.
Debbie Phillips.
Bob Precy.
Air and No Air Environmental Planner.
Consideration of the minutes of the regular meeting of July 19th at this location. Is there any comments regarding the minutes? Any corrections? Any revisions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion that the Wallingford Inland, Wetlands, and Water Courses Commission minutes of the meeting of Wednesday, July 19th, 2017, be approved.
Second?
Second.
Motion made in second. And any discussion? Call for a vote. Ally?
Yay.
Nick?
Yes.
David?
Epstein.
Debbie?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Going on to old business. Application A 17-6.3 off Washington Avenue and Oak Street, Town of Wallingford.
I'm Rob Voltramitis, your Town Engineer. With me is Jim Rossmann. Jim is Principal with Stadia Engineering out of Norwich, Connecticut. They're the town's consultant design engineers for this project. We are here seeking a permit for regulated activity to allow us to construct this project. There's two main components of it. It's a project that was conceived many, many years ago as a way to link the Wallingford Senior Center with Community Lake and the Quinnipiac River Linear Trail. Some of you may know the history. The town, quite frankly, we chased an option to try to get through some private property with cooperation to bring us out to Hall Avenue closer to Community Lake. That did not... We were not successful. But we were able to maintain and keep the project funding. It's a federally funded project. So our connectivity from Community Lake is over Hall Avenue down Washington Street to the Senior Center. And then the second component of the project is about a 1,400 linear foot walking trail from the Senior Center that goes southerly towards Oak Street and then over to one of the dredge ponds adjacent to Community Lake. I think... I think what I'll do... This works. This is one of the graphics that's in your most current information. I see Mr. Precy has this in front of him, so I'll just go over and orient you with the project. This is Community Lake up in the top part of the page here. Hall Avenue extending downwards. So again, that would be streetscape improvements, very consistent with what you would see on Center Street and Quinnipiac Streets. Decorative light poles, street trees, brick pavers. It's a way for the Town of Wallingford to improve one of its spokes into the downtown hub of Wallingford. So the second component, again, is the construction of a 1,400 linear foot trail that would start at the Senior Center off of Washington Avenue. And this portion extends southerly over toward... This is all on Town of Wallingford property. Over towards Oak Street where it would curl up and terminate with a viewing point out at the dredge pond adjacent to Community Lake in this area here. This big yellow blob, if you will, is really the only activity that's regulated by the Commission. We wanted to point that out in the overall view. And to that, this would be... And I'll orient you in a moment. This would be that yellow blob, if you will. This is Oak Street at the bottom with the paved end of the roadway in this location. You would come up this way to Washington Street. Senior Center would be up above the page. So the regulated activity we have are in two spots. Number one, there's currently a storm drainage outfall that takes storm water from about 140 acres of urban Wallingford. It actually starts up, comes down Center Street from North and South Main Streets. A very large area. And it discharges through a 33-inch pipe at this location. And quite honestly, it's created havoc. We have a lot of scour in this area. It has taken a lot of these erosive soils away. And while, quite frankly, we could construct this project without touching it, this is a good opportunity for us to correct the situation. So that's what we're doing. We're actually looking to extend the town's drainage further along Oak Street and discharge it to a more natural point here. So to improve these conditions, what we're going to do, we're going to upsize this pipe. We're going to create an angle point here in this drainage manhole. And what that does is allows us to take some of the energy out of the water, and we can let it go into this large plunge pool area, this location, and dissipate that water slowly as it makes its way towards the dredge pond and towards the Quinnipiac River. We have a planting restoration plan in this area. Again, these are the only two areas that there are regulated activity. The total wetland impact areas and upland review areas are summarized on this sheet for you. I think this color sheet is very informative. We have walked the site and met several times with the environmental planner. I was able to read her environmental report. At that time, at least August 29th, the report I read, there were two conditions of approval. We're accepting of them. I tried to think of ways to make my presentation longer, but I really think this is a relatively simple application that improves pretty bad condition. And with that, we can certainly answer any questions you have.
Well, let's see. Start with Ally. Any questions?
I don't have any questions.
Nick?
Rob, the water coming out of that diverted manhole there, you're going to slow it down. What's the quality of that? Just street runoff?
Entirely street runoff from urban Wallingford. And when I say urban Wallingford, I mean obviously we're talking a lot of the west side of Center Street from Main Streets all the way down, a lot of impervious coverage, you know, a lot of town roadways, state highways. So it's... To typify the water quality, it's coming off of roadways.
Okay. That's what... David?
No questions.
Debbie?
No questions.
Ally? Does this trail connect to anything?
Mr. Chairman, that's not a loaded question now. Well, it connects the Senior Center to this dredge pond, which if you've gone out there, it's a very nice view. I look at this project, number one, the connectivity from Community Lake and from all points in Wallingford is via a contiguous walkway, public walkway system. So I would say, yes, it is connected. You know, but I look at this as the first attempt to start to link and make a trail on the east side of Community Lake.
So it's the first attempt. So it goes to the Senior Citizen Center, out to this viewing area by the dredge pond?
Correct.
It's a two-lane highway?
It's a 10-foot-wide paved recreational trail.
And... But does it go past the Senior Citizen Center?
No. Right now, it would terminate at the... Basically, at the parking area, if you will.
And what's the distance on this?
Approximately 1,700 feet. I'm being correct, they're saying 1,700 feet from the parking lot out to the viewing area at the dredge pond.
Okay. All right. So that's the overall lay of what's going on here. As far as the wetland activity, what are you actually doing in the wetlands? This is the disturbed area, but what's going on there? What's there now?
The wetlands themselves, and there is a wetland report, a soil science report in your package. It's mostly floodplain. It is a very low-quality wetland. There's a lot of sand fallout. There's a lot of, frankly, trash and debris. What we're looking to do in most of our impact area at this new outfall is to make an improvement with our vegetation and plantings. The type of, number one, obviously, they're native plants, but there's something that will take off and really thrive in that area and be enhancement. You know, so I think to summarize this, Chairman, I have to say, we're really dealing with the area of wetlands we're impacting are very low-quality, and we're trying to improve the quality of those wetlands.
Good. And that's at Point A? We're talking Area A?
Correct. So I think what you're referring to when you say "A" is on that sheet, and I can no longer see it at this distance. We're trying to give you photos. We're trying to give you...
Well, this is the end of Oak Street, where the outfall goes out of Oak Street. This is Area A. That's the one you're trying to improve?
Correct. So what we're doing with that notation "A" there, if you look right where I'm pointing here, that's a photo from Point A looking in that direction that the arrow is pointing. So it's trying to show you what that wetland looks like now. And as you can see, it's highly eroded. There's a lot of sand deposit, exposed roots. If you can look close enough, you can see a lot of bottles and the trash that would come out of the storm system.
And Area C, that is going which way?
Okay. So that is the existing outfall of the 33-inch pipe, the one that we will be eliminating. That's in this area here. That has been a problematic outfall for the Town of Wallingford. It is a very, very deep scour hole, one that we repetitively will drop riprap in to try to armor, and it gets deeper and deeper and scours.
Well, when the gasification plant was on the end of Silk Street, which was across from the senior citizens, when the lake was down and was lowest, they went in and cleaned the coal tar out of the bottom of the lake. And what amazed me that they had to go down six feet through silk to get to the coal tar. So the bottom of that lake had filled in by six feet of various materials.
Correct. And to that point, Mr. Chairman, we have done, because it's part of, again, this is a federally funded project, so one of the things we have to do in demonstrating that we can support a pavement system for this trail is to do a soil analysis. So we've gone out there along the alignment of our new trail, and we have taken soil samples, and none of them have a scent, much to my surprise, but it's actually consistent with what you just said. There's been so much sediment deposit there that, you know, any potentially earlier...
Well, what is the elevation of your trail? 46-plus, 44?
Yeah, it's in, say, the 40... You're correct.
Well, the top of the pond was at 42. The Hartley Flow Line was at 42, so that was the level of the pond.
Correct.
So anything above that, it's probably very natural soils for the area. Interesting.
I got another question.
Nick, go ahead, Nick.
Rob, is this a seasonal trail or all year round?
Well, I think, you know, when the Town of Wallingford takes ownership of it and maintenance of it, it'll be very much like the Quinnipiac River Linear Trail, where it will not be plowed for the winter season, you know, but if there's not... We also don't discourage the use of it in the winter season. There are people who use it for cross-country skiing, but it's not plowed and maintained as a walking trail, and this will be much the same.
What about maintenance on it as far as trash removal and stuff like that? Who maintains it?
Well, it's going to be the Public Works Department, and I think, Nick, that it'll be like the trail is now, where we want to have those facilities at the beginning and end of the trails, but not necessarily along the trail. So if you bring it in, you take it out.
Anybody with any other questions? Erin?
All right. I've been working with the engineering department, looking at the plans, and we went out there and so on, and I summarized it in the environmental planner's report dated August 31st that went out in your packet. As far as looking at the regulated activities, I found that helped me to wrap my brain around what the actual impacts were and where they were. So there's no wetland impact as far as the trail itself, the trail bed itself. That, making of the trail bed, is impacts 34,800 square feet of upland review area for the construction of the trail. And of course, there's more trail, but it's constructed out of our jurisdictional area as you go toward the Senior Center. So the direct wetland impact, that comes about with the installation of the improved facility. That improved facility is taking the storm water and the large plunge pool going down into the floodplain area. And also, that includes the area of the wetland plantings. Now, those plantings are enhancements. The Commission might have asked for them as a mitigation, but it turns out that's part of the proposal, all these plantings in that area, which the town engineer has described as very disturbed at the moment because of previous siltation it receives and a lot of trash, little trash that floats in on the various flood events that we've had over the years and so on. The third regulated activity that I want to bring to your attention is the upland, is the surface area impact. We usually think of surface area as, you know, commercial development or something like that, but in this case, if you add up all the bituminous trail construction that's within the upland review area, it's 13,000 square feet roughly of surfaced area. So that's also considered a regulated activity. I'm very pleased that a fairly significant part of this project is eradication of invasive species. Typically, that's something the Commission might ask for as a mitigation, but that came to when the application was filed. That was part and parcel of the application. So I'm very pleased to hear that. And as I put in my report, when I go out in any floodplain in Wallingford, I always see invasive species because they like to get in there. They're very... They outcompete other species, and they get into there, especially you see them in the floodplains, where the floodplain soils are shifting landscape. They're not static landscape. They're shifting with every flood event. So the invasive species have a... They outcompete the other species. So that's part and parcel of this. Japanese knotweed being the biggest thing you see down there, but there's also a lot of mugwort, bittersweet, multiflora rose, and a host of other invasives which are named in the project. Something came in today that was not in your packet. It's just, I didn't copy it for you because it's just a piece of information. What it is, is the name of the wetland soil that we're dealing with. It's ripperwam. The soil scientists sent in a page saying it's ripperwam soil, that very fine dusty soil that you find in the floodplain down here. So I recommend if you want...
So you have no problems with the application?
Do we have any problems?
You. Do you have any problems?
No, I have no problems with the application.
Ally?
Just out of curiosity, what method are you going to use for removing Japanese knotweed?
Well, it's a very good question. Because this is a federally funded project, there is a specification that will get wrapped up right in the construction package. And, you know, that is it. That's a DOT specification. It's been provided, a four-pager, and it talks about any potential invasives. It gives a list, and if anything is encountered, and I want to be specific, it's not just on the Town of Wallingford property, but if it's in the project impacted area, there are specifications for the removal of it. I believe, quite frankly, I'm speaking without being an expert in the removal of invasives when it comes to Japanese knotweed in specific, it's removal of the roots, and it's a treatment, a spray treatment, if you will. And then a follow-up evaluation period.
Okay. Okay. There's no plan to replace it with something else to help press it out afterwards, after the spray dissipates?
All disturbed areas will be restored, and I believe it was with an upland, New England...
New England soil. It's a New England ground.
Conservation mix, I believe is the specification.
Is this project bonded? This will be bonded when he goes out to bid?
You mean by the contractor providing...
Services?
Yeah, they'll have to give us 100% performance bond.
Okay. Now, does your performance bond include the environmental impacts or negative impacts, if they cause any? I think this is... We've had this little brief discussion that there are projects out there that town-related or some other related, and... But with this bonding, if somebody does have a failure of some sorts, the bond has to be specific to say it does X, Y, and Z.
And I think to that point, a bonding company is always going to challenge you if you want to call the bond to try to get some mitigation. So a performance bond on a project like this, in my mind, as a town engineer, you know, a contractor is going to have to provide a warranty period for restoration of plantings. So bonds wouldn't be released until that's finally accepted some 365 days later. If there was a need, I've seen it in other contracts before. For example, we recently, in the Butterfly Trail, the Fresh Meadows, the Inland Wetlands Commission required a specific bond, and that was put right into the contract, you know, for a contractor, you know, when he signed up with the Town of Wallingford to also have to provide.
Well, that's what I was trying to get at.
Not so much if the plantings die, that's kind of a cut and dry thing.
I just didn't know if there was a massive erosion problem or a cave-in into the existing pond. Does the bond cover those kinds of things?
Well, what Mr. Rossmann was just pointing out to me in this special provision or specification, if you will, for the invasive removal specifically, what it says is, as we're paying an item, specifically the removal and restoration, that we, the town, are going to hold, never put the bond aside, we're going to withhold. Normally, you'll have a retainage in this type of contract. Usually, it's like a 2.5% range, not a heck of a lot of money. This is 30% of these items. So in other words, we can withhold 30% of his invasive removal and then his restoration for a year until he gets paid. That's quite some incentive. That, in essence, is a bond. That's a guarantee that he's going to do it.
Well, I don't see any major problem with this, but I thought that in the future, some of these bonds could have the environmental things wrapped in it. Not... So we could ask for a bond. We asked for a bond at Fresh Meadow. That was kind of specific, but I'm sure that's the first time we've ever asked a bond associated with a town project. I'm just thinking that possibly we can get some language in there that kind of protects us, or protects the town if there's an environmental... If they say, "No, that's not in the bond. You can't pull my bond for that," or any bond they can... Anyway, let's move on. Okay. Is there any other comments by the Commission, concerns? If not, I'll entertain a motion to determine if this is a significant activity associated with wetlands.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that, Application A 17-6.3, all Washington Avenue and Oak Street, Town of Wallingford, trail construction drainage improvements be deemed not a significant activity.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. And any discussion? Call for a vote. Ally?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Now I'll entertain a motion to approve or deny this application.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that, Application A 17-6.3, all Washington Avenue and Oak Street, Town of Wallingford, Connecticut, trail construction and drainage improvements be approved.
Motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Again, any discussion? Call for a vote?
Yes.
Ally?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay. All right. I guess you're all set.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you for your time.
You know, I was thinking 1,700 feet's probably enough for the seniors to walk that distance. Now, I would take them a little...
Well, earlier, I was saying 1,400. Is that not long enough?
Well, they'll get their exercise with it.
Thank you.
I'll be there soon. Okay. Going on to new business? There doesn't seem to be anything.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
We need to put in the two conditions of approval.
Unless, was... I'm not sure. Was that intentional?
What conditions of approval?
I'm a back...
Well, they agreed to the conditions of approval.
Oh, they did?
Yeah, they agreed to the conditions of approval.
Okay. So we'll just put it in the minute. We'll spell it out in the notice. Okay. Spell it out in the minutes.
Okay. Receipt of new application. A 17-7.19 Wiffle Tree Road. This was an above-ground pool request for administration approval. Erin and I discussed it, and we felt that it was not a problem. And for them, rather than wait until tonight's meeting, we gave them administration approval. Okay. Going on to next application. A 17-8.141 Twin Pines Drive. Now, this gets a little more complicated. Erin, you want to get into this? This is the one with conservation easement?
Yes. I actually did not have the owner... I didn't ask him to come tonight because I... Really, this is... I'm suggesting administrative approval, and it's a relatively simple application. Maybe I should have had him come tonight if we're going to kick it around a lot, but really, the difference here is that he's removing some trees. He wants to remove some trees that are, I've determined and he determined, are going to fall on his house. Okay. That's the easy thing. The complicating factor is these trees happen to fall within a 20-foot conservation easement. This is in the Toll Brothers project, the development known as Estates at Wallingford. And along the back, by the river, by Payton's Brook, like eight houses along the back, all have this 20-foot conservation easement.
Okay. But you were going to see Janice to get a ruling on this. What's her answer?
So she didn't write one, and else I'd hand it out. There's verbal reading that she needed... Everything's fine. The Commission can go ahead with it because what's required in the wetland application is two things. Notice to the Wetland Commission, which by virtue of him applying, that's notice, notice regarding the conservation easement. In our revised wetland regulations, we now have to give notice, the applicant has to give notice to a neighbor, to a land trust, to the state, whoever holds that conservation easement when he wants to do something within that conservation easement. In this case, the conservation easement is on his deed. So by virtue of the fact that it's, he holds it, and then he has given you notice via this application, he's covered that way. He also has to give notice to the planning department. So I referred it to the planning department. So they have gotten notice, and they will respond in kind.
Well, there's... I can't believe a conservation easement doesn't, would prevent you from removing a tree that was hazardous to your health or to... In fact, it was...
It's a formality.
It's a formality, but he didn't need to be here tonight because this is a formality within ourselves. It's not a formality with him.
Right. But planning, it's a formality. It says it in the conservation document on the deed that they've got to notice planning and zoning, they've got to notice wetlands, so.
All right. Does anybody have any reason not to allow him to cut the trees down in the conservation easement? And after all, she's determined that they are a dangerous situation. And after all, she's determined that they are a dangerous situation. Okay, then, I, I, I don't know, what do we do? We take a vote to allow us the administration approval? Or we just have a vote?
No, you don't have to. If you could ask if anyone disagrees with it being administrative.
Unless there's somebody to disagree, we're going to grant them administration approval to do that job. All right, election of officers, except that that needs a full slate of all members, including alternates, is that correct, Aaron?
I'm not sure about the alternates, actually. Definitely all five members.
Mike's not here, so that's held off again.
I'll check on that. I'll check, Mr. Chairman. If it's all five.
Are you going reports and communications? There's a KAKIWAQ meeting coming up. Is, well, how many seats do we have at it, Aaron?
How many what?
How many, we got to pay for each member to go?
Oh, no, 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 no. There's two things on the agenda. The first one is the membership dues. We pay that every year. And then they give us the Habitat magazine that comes out four times a year. Okay, and then also for our membership, we get reduced rates on the conference. Number two is the conference. If anyone wants to go to the conference, we get a reduced rate if you apply before October, I think it's 15th, whatever it says on there. And anyone can go, we've got money in the budget to cover conferences. So, you don't have to use your own money, you can get reimbursed. It's frankly easier if you pay with your, by check or credit card, and then I reimburse you.
So, if anyone wants to go check with you, then?
Yes, well, you can, no, they can register and then ask me to reimburse them.
Okay.
They can register online, or I'll register for them, either way.
Okay, now, you've got, item three is staff report on corrections, but you also have a memorandum that ties to recent activities. So, does this kind of tie together here?
Yes, that's.
All right, let's get into your memorandum. You want to go down quickly on what?
Yes, frankly, I need a copy of it, so. I've misplaced my copy of it, unfortunately.
Well, the first one is Old Gate Road.
Yeah, I just, as I say in the memorandum, there's only one application in front of the commission, but things have been, or two, but things have been very busy, and I wanted the commission to be aware of that. There's a lot going on. A lot of the permits that were approved a while ago are now under open, under construction, open permits. I checked most of them today after this heavy downpour. The ones that are open, I do go around and check, make sure there's no problems. I didn't find any erosion problems going on. I'm very pleased to see that. But, so, there's several on there. There are open sites.
Okay, but I wanted to go where remediation was required. Seven Old Gate Road.
Oh, yeah, that, I'm very pleased because somebody bought it. We had a lot of trouble with that, as you know. It went, we did an injunction, it went to court, there was a judgment, and the bank, it was foreclosed upon. The bank held the property. Well, someone bought it, I think in May or June, so this new fellow bought it, and I've been working with him. He's got a contractor about to give a quote this week, and I hope it'll go forward, and we'll get that fill removed both from his property and from the adjoining property.
Good.
Get that cleaned up.
Eight, are you, are they going to remove what we requested, or are they going to take it all out?
No, well, they're planning to follow the court order, and.
What, Janet?
What Janice was involved with. And you and I went out there, and we marked it on the dead tree and six feet down from the nail you put in the tree.
Everything that we talked about, they're going to be removing from the site?
And they're going to take the fill offsite, yes.
That's what I said, okay.
And, but this is the perfect season to do the work, because then at the end, they can plant the grass seed, and it'll grow before November, so I'm hoping it goes ahead.
Okay. Eight and 10, Atwater Place.
I have no movement. I was there today, the same old, they're still using it to park trucks, but no remediation has started. And that, you know, it got its cease and desist 10 months ago, and I keep on calling, I don't know why, there's no movement, why they haven't started the remediation. I know they need, they must meet with planning and zoning about the flood issues because they're filling in the floodplain. I mean, there was filling, there was recent filling about two years ago in the floodplain, and they have to address that.
All right, let's move on to Clintonville Road, 1092.
That, the notice violation was issued July 17. The owner came that night, July 19 wetland meeting, if you recall, he was here. And he did a good job the week before the meeting. He did a lot of work for me, but then he hasn't done anything really since then.
Okay, so you're on his case, then?
Yeah, he did indicate, he said, you know, now he wanted to grade that back slope and put in grass seed, get it going before the winter, get it established. And I said, "Okay, let's see it. And let's see a plunge pool." He needs a plunge pool in the back.
Okay, Rochello, 103 North Turnpike.
Yeah, he's moving along. He's moving along.
And 7690 South Turnpike, Adams Landing?
They were issued a notice violation last week. They are here tonight, you'll address them under violations later. So, we can talk about that later when.
All right, we'll hold that one off. 5:30 Church Street?
They keep on going. They call it Hidden Pond, Hidden Pond Estates or something like that. Hidden Brook Estates.
Did they get their retention pond straightened out?
Yes and no. I saw it today. It's holding up nicely, it's hydroseeded. But no one can tell me why the berms on it are 10, 12 feet high. No one can explain that to me. In other words, you have the outlet control structure, and the top of the outlet control structure is about four feet above the bottom, five, four, five feet above the bottom of the basin. And then behind that, you have berms that go up 10 or, to a total of 10 or 12 feet. So, I've repeatedly asked for explanation, and I'm told, "Well, it'll change, it'll change." Well, maybe they're going to take it down, but right now, it's like 70% hydroseeded.
Now, did they clean out the back of everybody's property?
Yeah, that's, they've taken care of that, yeah.
And the Quinnipiac River, did they dredge the river where it all dumped in? I gather not.
The Quinnipiac?
Well, I thought it built a delta out at the end of the brook where it all filled in.
If it did, nobody told me about it.
Okay.
I mean, it did breach and went to that brook, which doesn't have a name.
Well, the brook went to the river. So, it stopped, if it stopped anywhere, it went to the river.
Yes. Do you actually, did you hear that it made a delta in the river? I mean, I hope it didn't make a delta.
That's what I heard.
Oh, then maybe I should go look at that. You mean like three, five miles down?
Well, I don't know if it's quite that much, but it's. Okay, 605 North Elm Street, Dean Tally?
Oh, that's going along.
Tally's Road, 29 Tally's Road, Federal Express in New Core.
That's interesting. They, the reason I went out there with them last week was because they want their bond released. They have a $15,000 bond, and they were done last fall. So, they said, "Okay, let's have," I said, "Well, not so quick. Let's see how it did over the winter and so on." Then in the spring, we had to beef it up a little, need a little beefing up in the spring. They did that, and I said, "Let's wait a little bit." Anyway, I think it was that big storm we had in July. We had a really big storm in July. It blew out those wattles. They call them wattles, they're like a filter sock, long filter sock, that these were, we had them set, these, a series of them, maybe five of them, in the floodplain. Blew them out. Well, in truth, they half-rotted, you know, over time, these things rot, but they blew out. And they were not, they were like this, they weren't across anywhere, they were blown out. Plus, they're getting a little, like we all, we talked about before, they're getting some spill-off from New Core. So, last week, I went and visited New Core. I called them up, said, "You got a little stormwater problem." I went and visited.
So, they're working to all correct all the problems?
They are, and they handed in a sketch of little corrections they're going to do. This is FedEx. And we're supposed to go out and stake the certain areas on Friday, or Thursday or Friday, I forget. Tomorrow, Friday, we're going to stake where they should put the wattles. And because now they're, instead of wattles, they'll just blow out again, they're going to put stone check dams where they can. You can't put it in the floodplain, but you can put it in the park before the floodplain. So, they're going to put a series of stone check dams in the floodplain and a series of new wattles in the floodplain itself, where you're allowed to put.
Okay, Chimney Hill Road?
It's going good.
That's, Wederman?
Yeah, most of the houses are sold and built.
Del Bono, 69 Cheshire Road?
He posted his bond, he posted his bond, oh gosh, eight days ago. It cleared, I found out today, it cleared, and so he's good to go with his building permit.
Okay. All right, then let's, let us go back to application A 17-2.4, 7690 South Harford Turnpike, or South Turnpike Road.
Would you like me to put the plan up just to?
Please. And then microphone, of course.
Good evening. My name's Rob Sonnix, and I'm Registered Professional Engineer with Waldo and Associates. We are the project engineers for the project at 76 to 90, South Turnpike Road. We came before you and received a permit in April to basically complete the work that was supposed to be done when the building located on the property, which is a mixed-use building with offices on the lower level and apartments on the second and third level. There were a number of site improvements that weren't completed at the time that the building was built. And we came back in and applied for, to complete the work that had previously permitted. And features that were of concern was there's a compensatory flood storage area that needed to be excavated. The stormwater system was not completed. They put in a catch basin and just discharged the pipe onto the ground. They were supposed to put a stormwater structure in, and it wasn't included. Our plan that was approved calls for a stormwater structure, a pipe discharging to Oakdale Brook. Another aspect of the project that was more related to planning and zoning than it was to the Wetlands Commission, but we did get approval from your commission, was the construction of an auxiliary parking area. When the building was originally built, there was insufficient parking installed. And in order to rectify that, we worked with the town planner. We were going to, we requested that the Planning and Zoning Commission waive the construction of the auxiliary parking area on the north side of Oakdale Brook. But the Planning and Zoning Commission deemed it an inappropriate area for using deferred parking, and they required us, as part of their permit, to install the parking area on the north side of the brook. But, so that's a part of the project that we're working on, as well as some stormwater discharge on the north side of the brook, as well as mitigation planting on each side of the brook. The condition, one of the conditions of approval, there were a couple, two conditions of approval that were of significance here. One of them was that the plantings, particularly on the north side of the brook, since we were planning on subdividing the property, and, which was done with planning and zoning, this portion that has the existing building on it was subdivided off from the northern portion of the property. There was a concern that if the property was subdivided, that the plantings wouldn't be done because no one would know, potentially someone else could buy the property. And there was a concern about compelling the owner to do the plantings. So, we were conditioned that the plantings had to be done by June 15. They were done by June 15. They're in, they're doing quite well. After the remainder of the project's completed, we're going to go in and potentially make some modifications, but I've been very pleased. The soil's not real good out there, but the plants were pretty robust, and they're doing well. There's not much mortality. The violation that occurred had to do with staging of the project. We went through, and after we got done with Wetlands, the Wetlands Commission, we applied to Planning and Zoning for the subdivision application and for site plan approval from them. We applied in the beginning of May. They accepted our application on May 8. Unfortunately, we couldn't appear before them in June, so it was delayed until July. We finally got our permit at the end of July. There were some conditions that had to be met with the planning and zoning approval, particularly having to do with things like a deeded right-of-way along South Turnpike Road. We had to expand the right-of-way for the town, and that needed to have legal description and things like that. We submitted it to Planning and Zoning for their review at the beginning of August. And I think, as all you know, the town planner was married, and she was away for quite some time during August, which delayed us from filing the plans. And in the meantime, someone contacted the owner and said, "I understand that you have to bring some fill in to grade in a parking lot. I've got some extra fill. Would you like me to bring it to the site?" And he said, "Sure." Unfortunately, he wasn't clear that it had to be placed outside the floodplain up near South Turnpike Road, and it was in fact placed further in back, not in any of the mitigation planting area, but within the floodplain area on the site. And that was one of the main basis for the notice of violation. The other was that prior notice had to be given to the Wetlands officer before any work was done on the site, and that wasn't, that item wasn't addressed. And the silt fence wasn't put in prior to any other activity. So, Aaron contacted our office on August 23rd. On August 24th, the Wetlands was all put in on the north side of the parking, of the site where most of the construction activity is taking place. The stockpiles that were in the floodplain have been moved up into the location of the proposed parking lot where they should be. The next thing that's going to be done is that, as a requirement of the notice violation, it says to mulch the area, but we're going to seed it and mulch it, and that should take place within the next couple of days. One unfortunate thing that we found, as we were quote "cleaning up the site," and it's just sort of the nature of the beast, there's been a lot of midnight dumping on the backside of the property. So, the owner is doing right now a lot of cleanup work. I went down there, there was a lot of old masonry, garbage dumped, and things like that. So, as part of this response to the violation, we're actually going to rectify all of that historical dumping and clean the site up and stabilize it once and for all. So, then yesterday, I went out to meet the contractor and go over everything that was going to be done. And I said, "The notice of violation says you can do the following things. You can put siltation and erosion control in, you can excavate the compensatory flood storage area." But that's the extent of the work that you're authorized to do to address the notice of violation. And I went out and looked at, one of the things that had been done was a catch basin had been installed. And in talking with the contractor, I said, "We really need to have our survey crew come out and stake this construction site." And so, yesterday, we staked the compensatory flood storage. And so yesterday, we staked the compensatory flood storage area, we had a series of stakes and grade stakes, and we identified the actual locations and elevations of all the other physical stormwater structures that have to be constructed. So that's been our response to the notice of violation. I think that the, there was a miscommunication. I wasn't notified that they were going to construction. I told them there were conditions that had to be met before they, they went to construction. There was some miscommunication there. There was some staging done, but I think that they've been responsive and, and certainly haven't been ignoring the notice of violation.
Good. Erin?
All right, so.
How are they stat, right now? What's the status?
I went out there today, and there's no erosion that I could see. However, they did not put in the erosion controls on the, on the north side of the brook, you know, where the, all the stockpiles were. There were like 30 truckloads that they took out, because this, the, the town planner asked them to remove it, and they, because you can't put that in a, some of them were in the floodway, some were in the floodplain. You can't do that, you know, without offering compensatory flood storage. So, and they did remove all that fill and put it in the front, as they were directed to by the town planner, but there's no erosion control for that area. It's 30 feet from the stream, so, but the good news was nothing was going in there, it was okay. They did put in their erosion controls, you know, when they got the notice in August, so they're in.
So they've been cooperative on this problem?
Except the number one thing that the town planner and I am asking for is to remove, to make a compensatory flood storage area. You have to make that before you fill your parking lot. They filled the parking lot first.
Okay, wait a minute, wait a minute.
It has to go.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. If I'm looking at the map, the compensatory flood storage is on the other side of the brook.
The south side, yeah.
And how is that compensatory storage for the north side of the brook?
Be, be, it isn't. It's related to the fill they deposited on the south side of the brook for their additional parking area they made on the south side of the brook.
But he's, but it's staked out, the compensatory storage is staked out?
Yesterday, they staked it out, yes.
Okay, so they're, they're.
I'm just saying, they got the notice, because it was supposed to be in a month ago, so.
Oh.
Now, they will get to it, yes. It's on their to-do list.
Well, if they, if you were out there a month ago and they didn't do it, that's when you should have told them there's no compensatory storage.
Yeah, I didn't know they were doing anything. They had to notify me, they, they put in the silt fence. First thing you do, you put in your silt fence, you call me, you say, okay, we're about to build our compensatory flood storage.
But Erin, I want to conclude tonight's meeting, and I want to know if, what, what needs to be done with this gentleman right now?
Okay, what needs to be done, he's got to put in his compensatory flood storage area. That's the most important thing for him to do. He has to put in straw mulch in the area that he cleared on the north side of the brook. He indicated he wants to do seed, grass seed and straw mulch. That's great, do that, yeah. Let's see, what else? He's got to finish doing his, his pipe. That's not connected yet, is it? Or is, it is connected, that new stormwater facility is connected to the parking lot, the old parking lot.
But that's not part of the violation?
Yeah, just, let me just fill in a couple of blanks, because we're working with both your commission and the Planning and Zoning Commission. So one thing that the Planning and Zoning Commission said that we had to do before we could continue working was to submit five sets of drawings, which I brought in and gave to Erin earlier this evening, and two, post a $10,500 surety bond for sedimentation erosion control, which will be in place before the end of the week. At that point in time, the Planning and Zoning Commission is satisfied that we can go through and continue and finish our job. In the meantime, what we're going to do tomorrow is excavate the compensatory storage area. So I think that, and, and if you want, we'll put, we'll put silt fence on the north side of the brook also. So we can, we can do both those things. And, and part of it has to do with the physical part of excavating an area. You need to stage it and get it set up, so it was a little bit awkward, but I think we've got it squared away now. It's been staked, they're ready to go. It'll be done tomorrow. Okay?
Yes.
I don't know what more you can ask of him.
Oh, I guess one, no, I wanted clarification. That catch basin, the new one, the new catch basin concrete facility, head wall, whatever you, what do you call that?
It's a, it's a catch basin.
Okay, it's.
We checked, we checked it, it's at the right elevation and at the right location. That was something, there's no flow going to it, so it's pretty benign. It's not causing any erosion or anything right now.
But why isn't there any flow going to it?
I believe because the, it's being prevented, it's not, I don't know if it's completely connect, if it's been connected to the catch basin in the middle of the parking lot or not yet, but I was there today, and there wasn't any flow going through it.
Right, there isn't, but I just, the day that it gets flow, you gotta, there's no.
We have to, we have to put this, this, we, Universal Concrete has cast the stormwater structure. It's waiting in their yard in Danbury. It's gonna be hauled to the site, but we can't put it in until after we bring in the five sets of plans and post the bond. So we're very close to doing it, it's just, everything's a matter of a day or two, and it's going to be done, it's going to be installed, and once we get going, it's gonna happen quickly, and it'll all be buttoned up, and everybody will be happy, except, except the owner, because there's never, there's always plenty of excess parking on this side, and it's, I think a pity that the Planning and Zoning Commission, I understand why.
Well, we're not interested in it.
I understand.
We've got a Wetlands decision. It sounds to me like you've done 99% of what the violation brought to attention, so.
He didn't do his flood storage basin, he'll, he said tomorrow.
He's gonna do his flood storage tomorrow.
Right, so it's not done yet, not done yet.
It's staked, so what do you want to do tonight, Erin? You want to have him go out with a shovel and start digging tonight?
No, I just, just.
I mean, I mean, what do you want to do? You have this violation, and it's probably one of the better viol, people who have dealt with the violation than we've had in a long time. Most of them promised you the world, and then 90 days later, they haven't done anything. So where are we going with this tonight?
Maybe they, they can come back in October and tell us how things are, or I could tell you, I could report back in October and.
Well, that's fine. You stay on top of the situation. He's gonna have it done tomorrow. If he comes back in 30 days, we can call him a liar if he hasn't done the work. But I don't know what else you think you're gonna do tonight with him.
I wasn't suggesting anything.
Well, you weren't getting to the answer either, though. I'm trying to get to figure out here, and it, it was going nowhere. Anyway, are we all in agreement that this will all be done in a few days?
No more than a few days. They're working on.
Microphone, their, microphone or else they'll get.
As soon as the bond is posted, all of the construction work will proceed, but in the meantime, the construction work that was authorized by your notice of violation will be completed by the end of the week.
The, next week? The end of the week is only a couple of days. You think you'll.
They're gonna be out there tomorrow. We've staked it, they can, they can excavate it now.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Okay, I don't see anything else on this agenda tonight. Is there anything, anybody have any comments? Then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the meeting be adjourned?
Motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?